All right, everybody. Welcome to the March 29th Select Board Meeting. I'm Vice Chair Corey Evans. Chair Thompson is out of the country and unable to attend, so I will be chairing tonight's meeting. Pursuant to the Declaration of State of Emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is being held virtually on the Zoom platform. It will also be livestreamed on Facebook on the Cohasset livestreaming page. In addition, this meeting is being broadcast live throughout town on the town's public access station, 143 TV, which can be found on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Files Channel 43. A recording of this meeting will be posted on the town's YouTube channel, which can be found on youtube.com by searching for Town of Cohasset. That other way, we will open up the meeting with a roll call. Member Creighton.
Jack Creighton here.
Member Healy.
Jeanne Healy Dippled here.
Member Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy here.
All right, and Corey Evans here. That other way, anyone who would like to participate is invited to pledge, participate in pledge allegiance. Jack, if we could use your flag, that'd be greatly appreciated. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. All right, first thing for the night is public comment. Does anyone in the attendees that would like to make a public comment about something that is not on the agenda tonight? We invite you to put up your hand on Zoom and we'll invite you into the meeting. You can see there was one hand for a second there. I don't know if that was intentional or not. And just a reminder, if you're watching on Facebook, Facebook comments are not being monitored, so please join the Zoom. We do have one comment. All right, welcome to the meeting. Please begin with your name and address. Kelly Lynch. You are in the meeting?
She's muted.
Yeah, you're muted if you wanted to talk.
Yep, here we go. Better?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, I'm trying to put in my camera, but I don't even know if that's an option. Let's see, yeah. There we go. Thank you. So I wanted to, I appreciate the time this evening. I wanted to reach out to the Board of Selectmen.
Just Kelly, give us your address, please.
Oh, I apologize. I actually own Balance Studio, 15 Depot Court.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I wanted to reach out to the Board of Selectmen today with an idea for fundraising for the disaster, some disaster relief that's obviously what's happening over in Ukraine. And we had thought that we'd like to do a fundraiser by purchasing quite a few flags, eight by 12 flags on black plastic posts that we would sell at the studio to our, you know, students and to our extensive mailing list and hopefully get some of the local merchants involved. The cost is a little bit under $4 for the flags. We're thinking of selling them for $20 to $25. All of the proceeds would be donated to the Global Empowerment Mission, which is a standing organization that is, has actually been on the border in Poland since day two of the war. And they're doing food relief and emergency supply relief. So that's kind of the backstory, but what we'd like to do is have accessibility to the common so that we could, for a period of three to four weeks, maybe before the graduating seniors have their pictures placed all around the common. Just display the flags on the common is kind of a show of solidarity in the town and kind of a promotion of what we're doing and hopefully get people involved.
Okay, so thank you for that idea. Since it's something which we probably would have to have an event permit for, and then have you come back and give us, we'll put on an agenda, we can give the official green light. What's kind of the timeframe that you're expecting or trying to do this?
I can get the flags probably within two and a half weeks.
Okay.
Start pre-selling them. So if the commons available, say mid-April to mid-May, I'd love to be able to have the go-ahead, you know, as soon as possible to purchase and get them sold.
Yeah, we'll connect you with the town manager and help you out with the paperwork. And then we can have you come in front with an event permit and we can give it our blessing.
That would be great. How quickly does that turn around generally, Corey?
So we have to have 48 hours to put it on a meeting ourselves. That's really the only kind of restriction. So as long as the permit gets in and everything's square, we can put it on an agenda pretty quickly.
Perfect. All right, I appreciate that.
All right, thanks for coming.
All right, take care.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other attendees, so we will move on with comments, public comment note. So we'll move on. First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from March 22nd. Are there any changes that the Board would like to entertain? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the minutes from 3:22, 2022.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Vote by roll call, Member Creighton.
As is my custom, until such time as we incorporate the audiovisual Zoom thing in the minutes, I think they're incomplete. So I vote nay.
Member Healy. Member Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Corey Evans, aye. Next thing on the agenda, RFQ update with the American Legion. For this, I believe Michelle Leary is going to give us an update.
Hi.
Michelle, go ahead.
Okay, so just a quick update on the American Legion. To many, it's known as the American Legion, but it's located at 88 Summer Street. We are issuing an RFR for this piece of property. And what we're doing is we're issuing it for a 25-year lease period. And the purpose of this is to make sure that there's stability for the future for the American Legion. This has been a piece of property that has been running on an expired lease for some time. It's a housekeeping item. But due to Chapter 30b, Section 16, we do have to go out to bid on this piece of property. It has to be advertised for 30 days because of its value and its size. I've worked with Joe Hamilton. We reviewed the draft RFR prior to advertising it. He's given it the seal of approval. He's actually started working on his responses. And like I said, it has to be advertised for 30 days. Once it's, the due date is May 3rd. As soon as it comes back, we'll review the proposals and then we'll move forward with awarding the lease. And like I said, it's a 25-year lease.
Excellent. Member Healy.
Thanks for that update. One quick question, a technical question. Are there parking spaces associated with the lease or is it just for the property where the Legion is right now and, you know, the public can park in any of those town spots?
The way I understand it right now is it's the public can park in any of the town spots. The lease is just for the building envelope, if you will.
Okay.
Member Kennedy.
Just in terms of the likely respondents, is it posted for a nonprofit organization or something, you know, just to narrow that in?
Yes, absolutely. It's very similar to what we did with Barnes Field. There's preferential responses that will be graded higher than others. And like I said, we did work with Joe to make sure that we were capturing all of the wonderful things that the Legion does take part in. Knowing that it's nationally one of the largest veterans organizations, we wanted to make sure that we highlighted that as well.
Great, thanks.
Member Creighton, any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea. Do we need a motion?
No, this is just an update. So Michelle, thanks for the update. We're looking forward to getting this wrapped up.
Thanks, Michelle.
I'm sorry, Member Healy, did you have a secondary follow-up?
Yeah, I did. Just one quick question that arose in the context of 40 Parker Ave. In terms of who's going to bear maintenance versus capital costs? You know, I expect that that would probably be a facet that we as the Board might want to think through a little more, including if there's significant capital expenses that we might want to think through. I'm not sure if that's the case, but if so, that's something that we probably want to address before the leases finalized, you know, for the benefit of the Legion. So we don't get into the situation maybe we have with 40 Parker Ave in terms of maintaining that property and making sure we're keeping up. That's just more of a comment.
Member Creighton.
I think that's an excellent point, Jean. The question is whether this is a triple net lease, an absolute lease. If it's an absolute lease and they'd be responsible for the maintenance of the Capitol Building. It's unclear to me which one it is. Does anybody know, Michelle?
Yep. So as of right now, it's an absolute lease. They are responsible for everything, capital, maintenance and all utilities included. So they are solely responsible for the building. That's not to say that they can't apply to CPC for funding if it does get the designation that's a historical structure to get some help from the community.
But they essentially own the building.
They own the rights to the building, yes, for 25 years.
All right, Michelle, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, next thing is going to be, the Red Lion has submitted a request for an extension of hours on July 10th, 2022. Do we have somebody to present, Member Dippled, Member Healy?
I'm going to recuse myself right now.
Oh, sorry to interrupt, Corey. I did just send you an email that they sent over. An email Tony did, the manager, stating that they didn't need this date approved because it was in the group of dates that they already had approved from the board. So it's not necessary.
That's wonderful. So we can move right along.
So let's let Jean know. She can come back.
Okay, next thing on our list of things to discuss tonight is the MBTA zoning letter. There were some changes which came in kind of under the wire. I want to thank Lauren Lind for incorporating them as quickly as she did. Lauren, if you'd like to give us just a quick recap and where we are, that'd be appreciated.
Certainly, thank you. So good evening, everyone. I'm Lauren Lind. I'm the Planning and Zoning Director for the town. I was here last week giving a presentation about the new legislation known as the MBTA multifamily housing for MBTA communities. So we, I'll just let the Board know, we did receive a couple of comments, really across the spectrum. I did forward all of those to you. So you had those for the community's sake. We really saw, like I said, across the spectrum, people saying that they were really, really concerned about this. They'd rather see the MBTA, you know, leave town than have to see this kind of housing production. There is people sort of in the middle of the road, understanding that we do need to expand our housing stock in more diverse ways. But that, understanding that what they're asking of us is, you know, too far. And then we also had people saying, invited in, we want to see this kind of housing. So we really saw a diverse perspective from the comments that we got back. We did receive some comments from select board members and then the most recent draft, we actually received comments from the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And it's, you know, not very, not many substantial changes, just, I think, really to sort of condense the points. Just the statement, while the town across it supports the objectives of affordable and multifamily housing in the housing choice legislation, the proposed regulations are outsized relative to a small community such as Cohasset. We respectfully ask that any revised DHCD regulations address the concerns of communities with a population in the lowest decile of MBTA communities. And then, you know, just another data point later on in the list on between district size and unintended effects is just a note about smaller MBTA communities that it's worth noting the town across is the lowest decile of MBTA communities with a 2020 population of 8,381, ranking 125 out of 154 MBTA community sizes by size. The average MBTA community population is over three times the size across it. To smaller communities, the minimum number of 750 is a significant premium to the 15% required by the larger commuter rail communities. So I, those were the two points that were added by Katie Dugan, if the Board would like to consider having that as your final letter. And then we also do have a signature page so that all members of the Select Board can sign, not just the Chair, as we'd previously had in the initial draft.
Excellent. Thanks for the updates. Just asked the Board, did everyone have a chance to just look at the last minute changes? I know they came late. But I do think it was helpful that they were kind of red highlighted, made it easy to find. So questions from the Board, Member Kennedy?
I just have one small comment. I went in at the 11:59, you know, 59 seconds and just added an "and" to the last paragraph. It just seemed like there needed to be, there is semicolon continuation or an "and" after the first kind of phrase. So just look at that. It's not a big deal. It's not material, but I think it needs that letter, that word.
Member Healy.
Lauren, thank you for considering all of the comments and revisions that I did. I like the letter. I think it it ultimately reflects the balance of different views that we have within our community, including, you know, those who legitimately want more and varied, including vary from an affordability standpoint, housing, but also the practical realities that we're grappling with. And I'm fine with the additional red lines as well. At the end of the day, you know, I think I'm ultimately okay with it.
Creighton.
Yeah, I think it's well-written and I think it expresses the will of the community. And I think this is an issue that we're going to be addressing in a substantial matter down the line because this is not a policy that we can absorb. We just can't. So I think it's a good thing. And I'm not going to say a word about our English teacher finding that comment there. Diane.
Yeah, I thought that the changes were very good. I liked that the added language was very kind of direct. And I thought to remember Healy's point, like it was able to really make it clear kind of what our message is. So we do have one audience member, the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, Katie Dugan. I'll bring her in. Katie, you're in the meeting. You can unmute and make your comment, please.
Great. Can you guys hear me? Great. So I'm not going to start video. I just had a very small comment that I wanted to make, which is, I think the letter is an important first step of us advocating for the town of Cohasset as it relates to these proposed DHCD regulations and rightsizing them for Cohasset. I would encourage the Select Board to take the next step of inviting at either the April 5th or the April 19th minute meeting, Senator O'Connor and Representative Machino. I think they need to hear directly from your Board now that we've put the work into our formal letter. I think sending the letter to them and then requesting that they meet with you to discuss the proposed regulations, they can be extremely effective in advocating on our behalf with the DHCD in ways that I think just our letter alone will not, including perhaps meetings with members of the DHCD to truly get our message across. So I would encourage that, you know, and the added bonus of doing it in April is that the the House and the Senate are working on state budget. So you could probably do a one-two punch of getting a budget update from them and advocating for what we're trying to message in terms of these proposed regulations on multifamily housing.
Great, thank you for that. And for the record, just give us your address, please.
Sure. Katie Dugan, 100 Black Rock Road, Cohasset.
Excellent. Thanks very much.
Corey.
Oh yeah, Member Creighton, please.
Yeah, I strongly support that. It's very important that we get our elected representatives on Zoom before their constituents to further pledge. It's very easy for them to say, yeah, yeah, we support it, but kind of not work very hard. So this is a time, this is a crucial issue for our town. This is a time to hold both our representatives. We need to hold their feet to the fire. And the best way to do that is have them appear in person to the Select Board meeting. So it's a great idea. Thanks, Katie.
All right, we'll have the town manager help us set that up. So with, right now, I'll entertain a motion to adopt and sign the MBTA community's draft guidelines comment letter.
So moved.
Second. Second. All right, vote, roll call, vote. Member Creighton.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Member Healy.
Jeanne Healy Dippled.
Member Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Corey Evans, aye. Lauren, thank you very much for all the work on this. We appreciate it. The whole community, yes.
Thank you all. I'll coordinate with Tracy to get the remaining signatures and we'll get this submitted before the deadline of the 31st.
Yeah, we all have to sign it. Yes, okay.
Great, thank you all.
Member Kennedy, you had a question?
No, that's what I was going to ask. So the signature page will be available tomorrow and Thursday morning, if we could get there by then.
Yes.
Yes, we have the April 1st deadline.
Get scanned and sent.
31st is the deadline.
31st, sorry. The April 1st is past the deadline, my apologies. All right, thank you very much again.
Thank you all. Good night.
Okay, as we do regularly, we have our Finance Director, Don Pyatt, here to give a FY 2222 budget update. Don, the floor is yours.
Good evening. So I sent you guys all the information last week. I'm just going to go through a quick update instead of showing the reports on the screen, if that's okay. And I can kind of field questions after that. So overall, three of our appropriated budgets, general fund, water and sewer are continuing to trend on target or just slightly above target. In the general fund, our revenues are 77.7% collected through February 28th. Local receipts are 92.2% collected. On the expenditure side, we're at 62.9% of the budget expended. Looking through the departmental details, not really seeing anything out of the ordinary. Obviously, the one thing to note, which I'm sure you guys are aware with all the snow we've had and weather events, our snow and ice budget is in a deficit position right now on 25,000. As of this report, just running reports through last week's warrant, we're at about 178,000 deficit. Fortunately, we haven't had to tap the Reserve Fund, the Advisory Control and Reserve Fund. So I anticipate we won't have any issue covering that by the end of the year with year-end transfers. I can stop there to see if anybody has questions on the general fund.
Member Healy, sorry.
Hi. Hey, Don. Thanks for the presentation and the summaries are super helpful. So a quick question. I know that the Advisory Committee Reserve Fund is typically used to address police and fire overtime, which, as I recall, right now is trending pretty high. If we have 243 in that fund and we're looking for it to cover 178, and I think, if I recall correctly, the projections on police and fire overtime are 450. Are we going to have an issue at the end of the year with addressing some of these overages, including overtime?
At this point, I don't believe so. I'm looking at the overtime right now. And we're still in a surplus for police overtime. Again, through February, we will be in a deficit by the end of the year. But I do anticipate that we have other budget, budgetary surpluses that will assist us in covering those towards the end of the year. I do, I do. And the good thing about snow and ice is the one appropriation line that we can legally overspend. If for some reason, we can only cover costs in police overtime or any other areas, we can then raise that part of the deficit on next year's recap. So essentially, what would happen is we go through the year-end close, we get free cash certified, and then as we're going through next year's recap and budget, that deficit can be essentially paid for through free cash or some other funding source. So, but even before that, I'm pretty confident that we'll be okay. Again, we still have four more months left, so I mean, snowstorm could hit, other things could happen, but right now I'm feeling pretty confident that we'll be okay.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. It shouldn't make me feel better, but it does, that we can move the deficit to next year. So, okay.
Other questions? One question I had, Don, was, and this really, I know we can't project in real time, just for local meal receipts. I know that that comes a little bit late and I'm not so much worried about our budget as it is just an economic indicator of how restaurants are doing. So do we have, is there, seems like people are out there and busy. Are we seeing that yet coming through the revenue stream?
Yeah, absolutely. Our meals tax, we're actually 99% collected on our budget. We're up.
Good job, Cohasset.
Just over 60,000 from this time last year. So I mean, that is a good indicator that people are out there going out to our local restaurants and, you know, participating in local business.
Great news. Member Kennedy, Member Creighton, any other questions for Don while we have him?
I'm all set. Thank you, Don.
Member Kennedy.
I just had a question about the about the overtime in police, which is typically taken up, my understanding is through budget transfers, so surpluses and other budgets as opposed to a reserve fund. I don't remember using the reserve fund to cover overtime, at least in recent past.
Right. So effectively what happens is at the end of the year, we can buy, by law, I come before you folks in advisory to do our year-end transfers. We have that ability through July 15th. And so really what happens is if we don't use any of our reserve fund for any other transfers within departments, that is essentially used to help us, along with any other surpluses in other departments, to help offset deficits in the other departments. Again, therefore not having any deficits at year-end, those surpluses help us offset.
Mr. Senior, you had to handle.
No, Don has asked that, but I was going to say, so we're all set.
Okay, it looks like we're good here. Don, go, keep going.
Moving on, sewer revenues are at 74% of the budget collected. Usage and connection fees are the big drivers there at 68.4 and 257% collected. The expenditures are right at 76.7. Of that, general expenses, which are non-debt service and transfers are at 60.5. So just in line on both revenues and expenditures there. Any questions before I move on to water?
Please continue.
All right, so water, we're at 77.9% collected. Again, there too, usage and connection fees are the big drivers, 76.1 and 375% collected. And expenditures are also in the 70s at 71.6%. And general expenses at 52.2. Happy to take any questions.
All right, looks like we are good on sewer and water. Anything else for us, Don?
Oh, that's it. Thanks for having me.
All right, we appreciate the time. Thanks for coming on time. We'll see you next time.
All right, good night.
Okay, we are just on schedule, which is wonderful. Next thing on our agenda is using our discussion of ARPA funding for the purposes of refreshing the Paul Pratt Memorial Library roof. Chris, you have the floor.
So thank you. So as was discussed when the committee made its presentation this week, making every effort to squeeze as much into this year's plan as possible. And which is coming along really successfully, by the way. So the one area that's been deemed critical, that is, well, one of the projects that's been critical is the place where the library absolutely has to be known as was described as the memory. It's not the slate, it's the area beneath the slate. And so because there's the fund for money for this, we've been asked by Capitol, what do you see as alternative ways to fund this so we can stretch the capital balance even further? What's happening now, because I wasn't sure what was going to happen with CPC, it looks like they are going to make an effort to vote on this next Monday. So if that meeting comes off, they may be able to fund all or part of this request. And if they do, then I can come back to you with a smaller request. So I think it might be better to give them one more shot at seeing if they have the ability or if they're amenable to funding. One of the things we've discovered is that, well, a lot, tremendous amount of work was done on historical or designations 30 years ago. A lot of the final paperwork was never completed. So a whole lot of properties that really legitimately historical were never voted on to make form, to put on a formal list. So actually getting those eyes and T's crossed and those lists made right now with historical admissions, one of those properties. So they'll vote for the library next Monday. CPC is trying to schedule a meeting for next Monday. That'll make it officially legal. I mean, everyone else is 100 years old and it's legitimate, historical, it'll be on an official list. And if they're able to fund even some part of this, I can come back to you next week and say, well, we need to fund the gap with another chunk of money. Total current expanded price to 10, $10,000. So because CPC is going to take this up again, I'll ask for one week. I'll come back to you next week with the final final ask.
Member Kennedy.
So Chris, this might be premature, and I know that the what you can use ARPA funding So, Chris, this might be premature, and I know that the what you can use ARPA funding for is pretty complicated. But why would this library roof be eligible for ARPA funding or the use of ARPA funds?
We're pretty confident that that it's it's a it's a it's a it's a membrane replacement of the roof. It's a it's a health and safety item. It's a safe building item. So, you know, it has to do with indoor air quality and all of that other stuff. If you have leak, you have problems, you have mold, all of that. So it qualifies under those in that whole, you know, healthy indoor safe buildings areas. We also think that that based on some of the rules that have come down, that the uses have been brought fairly significantly anyway. And again, this is a public building. It's a public place. This is to keep water intrusion out, right? So it checks a number of boxes. So we feel comfortable that it will work. Those ones where we'd actually apply for that chunk of money the county holds, we pull money out of that fund for this. Then we don't have to, we won't. Again, we'll see if CPC is able to do anything next next Monday.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? If not, we will just we'll put this on the what is looking to be a very busy April fifth meeting. So feature weedy's everybody. If not, we can move on to the next topic at hand, which is the Situate Sewer Connection, the update from Chris Senior and vote on the framework, please. Chris, you have the floor.
So so, Jason, if we can just, can you pop up that that point, those bullet points? So the the at the select board's direction, a meeting took place with Situate representatives. I was like a Creighton, the selectman Evan, select member Evans and sewer commissioner McGowan and myself went down to Situate last month and talked about a framework for conversation. And what came back from Situate was was what you see, which has been distributed to you folks. With with the this being in front of this board tonight for consideration to give the sewer commission direction to continue the conversations, right? The one change in this is the gallons per day that Situate was looking for a little different number. The Brian Joyce, I asked him to take a look at what we've been able to wheel, and we did that. We had a period of time when the sewer plant was down, we were pushing more sewage to hull. He felt more comfortable at a hundred than he said a hundred twenty is about the max we're able to do in the current configuration. Doesn't mean that you couldn't go further if there was other tweaks done. But again, that'd be something subjective for the conversation. So what this is is just is a sort of formalizing the conversation that took place among the members that I mentioned. There was two members, a select board from Situate there, two, their town administrator and the director of public works. And and this is just a framework for further conversation. I turn it over to to Vice Chair Evans for more elucidation.
Yeah, so basically, what this is, we agreed at the meeting that Citrate would draft a little bit of a memo, and this memo lines up with my notes. So the sewer commission has, and I'm just reporting what I've seen at their meetings, they've taken it under consideration. They would like to have further discussions with with Situate. And about all these points, I was at the meeting this morning, and all three commissioners had questions about, you know, Commissioner Paul Kears mentioned that the end of the budget cycle issue where like point point seven saying that we should look for state and grant funding, that the deadline for that's coming up. So they understand that they want to move on this fairly quickly. Commissioner Wayne Sawchuk was describing different ways to to kind of put this agreement together and different possibilities for the infrastructure. And at this point, I think what this board's decision is to endorse their efforts. They want to have a more in-depth conversation, and it obviously has to involve the select board, because anything that's a cross, a multi-talent agreement has to also be endorsed by this board. So at this point, we would, we can vote to, you know, we can choose to endorse this letter or not. And then it would allow the sewer commission to move forward with the discussions, knowing that they have the backing of the of the select board. That's my update. Member Creighton, please.
Yeah, this is basically, I was at the meeting, obviously. This is what Situate's proposal is. What we ended up asking them to do is to give us a proposal of what they wanted. So we should be very careful that we understand this is their proposal. And they're asking us to sign it and also think they are also envisioning Hull becoming involved. Right? So I think it's about time that we dealt with the sewer. Pollution that's in our harbor and ninety percent of it does come from Situate. I believe Situate, yes, there's Hull is is there. So this is ninety percent of it, according to our sewer commission, is from Situate. Ten percent is from Cohasset. We do have the capacity to easily take care of all of our needs. So Cohasset does not necessarily need this. I think there is a feeling that we need to move forward on dealing with in some manner. Now, my understanding is that Situate does have the ability to independently treat their North Situate sewerage. For whatever reason, they find getting Cohasset to do that is advantageous, and we don't know the answer. I would suggest that we need, and by the way, people should understand that things with the sewer, the sewer commission is independent. They have to make their decision. We don't. Also, for an expansion of a sewer district, it does require state approval. And there's lots of other little details in there. So I would suggest that we indicate that we are interested in solving the sewerage issue, but I'm not sure that it does Cohasset good or the process to clean up the our harbor good to accept what basically are Situate's, you know, agreements. I think probably a more prudent way would be to say we're that we are committed to cleaning up the harm, getting rid of this, however you want to phrase it, getting rid of the sewerage. And that we think that among the things that should be considered is a joint venture. But the specifics, Cohasset will accept, agree capital expenses directly related to the sewer project. You know, these are all kind of things that would maybe happen down the line, but we don't have any idea what the cost of this is likely to be. We don't have any idea about the political ramifications of inter municipal system, and they are very, very severe. So, you know, I don't think that we need to commit to go forward on the basis of information that we do not have and the town does not have. That being said, I think the prudent thing is to say, yes, we were interested in hearing with the proposal, and yes, we want the sewer board to proceed. But I've always found that when you negotiate, you don't negotiate on the basis of the other of the counterpart's agenda, and this is their agenda. I think we should indicate we are welcome to doing that, and I think that we need to also indicate within our own town that it's time that we get the harbor cleaned up. Absolutely. Nothing's been done for years on it, and increasingly, the harbor gets shut down. We may find that Situate does, in fact, as it's been told to me, have a plan to do it, in which case this whole exercise becomes moot. But in the meantime, I think we need to authorize the sewer board to continue discussing it. It is, after all, their 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 problem to some extent. So I'm all in favor of authorizing a sewer board. And I'm also all in favor of saying, if this is a good alternative, go for it. But I don't think we ought to go through all the details.
Member Kennedy, I think you were next.
Yeah, I have a question and then and then my grammarian update on this this agreement letter. The question is, in Hull and Situate, it's really a question for Hull. Is there select board, their sewer commissioners, or do they have an independently elected sewer commission like we do? I know Situate's select board are the sewer commissioners, I believe.
Chris.
You know, just.
I I I believe, Member Kennedy, that Hull has been appointed by the select board, permanent sewer commission. So they have a sewer commission, but it's appointed by the select board. That's what I, that's my understanding. Controls the decision making.
Right, just in terms of the the signatories of any kind of agreement. I mean, you know, in our case, it is going to be both, and we have to work hand in hand with our sewer commissioners. My read of of this is, and it's, I just pulled it, it just dropped off, and I apologize. I'm going to try.
Chris, can you share it again, please?
So if if reading the that first paragraph where it says, we, the undersigned officials, blah, 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 it says, agree to work cooperatively on the, basically, I'm going to summarize it, on a construction, maintenance and oversight of an agreement as opposed to a project. So I would suggest that if we were to go forward with this and to Jack's point, you know, maybe maybe some of the details of the acceptance of gallons and Corey and Jack and Chris have been part of these meetings that I haven't been. But, you know, maybe we don't need those numbers there, but I would suggest we edit this to say, we, the undersigned officials from Cohasset Hull and Situate, agree to work cooperatively to draft a limited regional sewer agreement that will outline construction, maintenance and oversight of a potential limited regional sewer project among our communities. So basically, what we're, I think, if I understand this correctly, and I was the liaison to sewer back in like twenty fourteen, when we started these discussions for the purpose of cleaning up the harbor. And, you know, the idea was, we wanted to just move the discussion forward, and I I would be comfortable signing something like this if it's basically like, yes, we are committed to having this conversation to draft an agreement. You draft an agreement doesn't mean you end up signing an agreement or executing on an agreement, because there are still, there still remains a lot of unknowns in terms of costs. So anyway, I would I would suggest that that first paragraph language at a minimum just be altered so that we're working cooperatively on reaching or devising a draft agreement for the potential. And I can send that language depending on where this conversation goes.
Member Healy.
So thank you, Member Evans and Creighton for, and you, Mr. Senior, for your work with Situate. I do think it's good that we're, you know, starting to engage with them to figure out what the possibilities are. And I assume that Hull will become a part of those discussions as well as we move forward. I do think that this agreement has a lot of potential. I agree, the devil's in the details. I think that a part of what we need to think about too, as we think about signing something like this, is what is Cohasset's interest? If, for example, our primary interest is cleaning up the harbor, then we should have that explicitly set out as a goal during these negotiations. That's something that's sleeping out to me as an element that's not present. So, for example, you know, the MBTA's housing choice legislation doesn't require affordability, even though it's implicitly the underlying goal, right? And so I think that there is some work to be done on. Some of the language is a little bit weird to, I'm going to leave it at weird for lack of a better adjective. I think that, and let me suggest some language right now, because I've been trying to condense this in my mind. I think we could either have an agreement or we could just do a motion that will provide comfort to the other towns that we, the select board, working with the sewer commission, believe in X, Y, Z. But whether it's an agreement or a motion, I think that we can say something along the lines of, you know, we, the select board, working with our sewer commission, or we can do the sort of undersigned officials, agree to continue to pursue negotiations relating to a limited regional sewer agreement between Cohasset Hull and Situate, with the agreement being subject to the final approval of each town. And this agreement will discuss, among other things. And so here are, I think, the three things that we all really care about. One, the expansion of sewer lines and wastewater into Cohasset and Situate to service portions of Cohasset and Situate and to clean up the Cohasset Harbor. Two, Hull's receipt of an invoicing relating to additional wastewater created by the expanded sewer lines. And then three, the capital expenses and costs relating to the sewer project, including payment for such expenses and costs, as well as government grant and funding opportunities relating to those. So again, we're keeping it sort of high level, hitting sort of the key points of what are we doing, including the goal that Cohasset wants? How was Hull included in all of this? And then we're going to work out the details in terms of costs and expense. I think that I do have some questions, really technical questions, but also questions into the future about what are the right amounts of gallons to request from Hull? You know, I think maybe we need to think through that a little more and get Hull's perspective as well. And so I would be comfortable doing something, again, a little more high level, that I think ultimately gets us to the same place, but maybe has, you know, language that isn't quite so, perhaps, I don't want to say falsely precise, but, you know, that gives all of these communities flexibility in terms of what we're really doing is we're not agreeing to an agreement. We're agreeing to continue negotiations with some parameters about, you know, where we think they're going to go.
Yeah, okay, so just for a little bit of background, the member Healy, you brought up the idea of the goal is is the harbor and section one and the and the roads that were chosen, that was based on basically GIS data for how the how the how the land is slanted. So those were specifically chosen. There were actually some areas earlier that were in discussions that were dropped off the map purely because they did not meet that that, you know, goal one A of cleaning up the harbor. When it comes to the specific language, a lot of these items I liked because they were, you know, stakes in the ground, and some of them did come from us. So the idea that Hull would invoice Cituate directly, one of the concerns that the sewer board had had is that Hull charges more for processing than we do. And for a variety of reasons, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't expose our ratepayers to that if we don't need to. So having Hull or having Hull invoice Cituate directly was really to protect our interests so that we get, you know, the improvements of the harbor, but we're not exposed to an external price control that that we may not have as much authority over that we'd like to. So and what I like about the kind of getting more detailed here is I see that as these are understandings for what needs to be addressed. And I think that will protect us because we're saying explicitly, if there's a capital project, any capital cost that's shared, we have to share that cost. We don't want to be paying for somebody else's sewer, you know, we don't want to be paying for some an upgrade in Hull. That's not part of this. So a lot of these things I appreciated because they they put those 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 limitations on the agreement. And those were some of the things that we we talked about, and I don't want to say fought hard for, but certainly were a part of the discussion that we had down at Situate. Mr. Creighton, I saw your hand. You're muted again. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Corey. You know, I think there's kind of a broad agreement that we we need to authorize moving forward. I'm not sure, and I tend to agree with Diane and Jean on this. I'm not sure that getting into a lot of specifics, then we end up actually negotiating a contract. I think it is sufficient to, you know, say that, hey, listen, we're ready to talk, but we're not ready to negotiate. And we also have to remember that ultimately, this is going to have to be approved by the voters. First, it's going to have to be approved by the, you know, sewer board, and I've been working with them for two years on a lot of details on this kind of stuff, because I understand a little bit, having worked in similar municipal things that had bodies that had to deal with this. So I I think that, you know, Corey, that Jean's language allows all of this and kind of allows us to stand back and see this. There's some things, we could go on into the middle of the night on specifics or things about, you know, our need for overflow to Hull and and what that looks like, but Hull needs our volume. They've been complaining that we dropped, we didn't need their services for a while, and they missed the money. And there's a lot of. And there's a lot of, of underlying issues underneath all that, and I don't think that we want to negotiate a, a contract, but I think what we need to do is say, this is a priority and the Select Board says, authorizes, we want progress moving forward. It's beyond our capacity right now to figure out all the nuances back and forth. But I think that Jean kind of distilled this to what we really need and removed some of the stuff, it's probably because she's an attorney. But, you know, I would, I'd be very comfortable with, you know, basically moving forward with Jean's and, and to your points Cory, you know, I was in, in the meetings too, and we start getting into who said what and what does that mean, and what does Situate mean when they say this, what do we mean? And I don't think we want to do this in this document, I think in this document, we want to set a framework to move forward because let's remember, what we really want to do is move forward to clean up our harbor. So I'd be in favor of Jean's, you know, modifications to this.
Right, I just, I want to be sure that we don't go too much in circles, so.
I know.
It sounds like that there's, there's somewhat of a consensus for working with this, are there specific changes, Member Healy, that you would make to move this forward? I'll give the floor to you.
Well, maybe, maybe we can, there's a way to have a quick compromise on this and, Member Creighton, I don't know what you feel about this, but if we changed, "Agree to work cooperatively, blah, blah, blah" on the agreement, we could say something, instead say, "Continue to pursue negotiations relating to a limited regional sewer agreement, you know, subject to the final approval of all communities." These negotiations will include, at a minimum, so we're going to be talking about all this anyway. At that point, then, the specificity is much less. What's tripping me up is the agreement because the negotiations may end up going in, you know, I, we expect it now, but you know, during the course of negotiations, things may change unexpectedly. So I just want to leave all of us some wiggle room in terms of that aspect. So I would, so if you want, you know, what I would redline is, "We, the undersigned officials from Cohasset, Hull, and Situate agree to continue to pursue negotiations relating to a limited regional sewer agreement between our communities, subject to the final approval of our communities. These negotiations will include, at a minimum, the following potential agreement elements." And then just leave the rest in, and then I think, again, you get to the same place, but we're not, you know, looking like we're binding ourselves into some agreement terms before we actually, you know, get to press tax. That, that could be one approach.
Yeah, and.
Let me just, let me get Member Kennedy in here first, check, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't raise my hand either, but no, I would, I'd be comfortable with that and, you know, Tracy, you're going to have to listen to the tape, but it's, it's basically sort of what I'm saying, we're, we're agreeing and putting in writing and putting our, you know, stake in the ground that we want to continue these conversations, you know, to be mutually beneficial as, as we get into the details. So if we can, you know, the, the sense is, yes, and I would be happy to make that motion once Jack has his opportunity to speak, but I'm, I'm good with that, assuming we can translate that into, to words.
Okay, Member Creighton, please.
Yeah, I agree, although I would put, use the word discuss, and one of the reasons is, is a very practical thing, we do not want to be, have, give even the appearance to our constituents that we have, you know, agreed to a, a regional sewer thing, which I think needs to be decided, and I think legally needs to be decided at town meeting. So I'd be, and then the other stuff, you know, I'm fine with the stuff that you like in there Cory, but maybe if we agrees to discuss, so there's no question that we haven't kind of done a backdoor approved regional sewer, and I know we're not doing that, but that doesn't mean that the issue won't be portrayed that way.
Great, and, and two points of clarification, this obviously is, and for anyone watching, is a non-binding thing, if, to Diane's point earlier, if there is any part of this where we can't come to an agreement, we don't have to do anything, this is non-binding. Second point is that all sewer expansions will be voted by, by the Sewer Commission and brought to town meeting, none of our boards have the authority to do such a thing without town meeting. So with that being said, I thought, I think I saw Member Kennedy's hand first, let's try not to go in circles because we have other stuff to do.
Yep, I just wanted to say that I think we should stick with the language, continue, you know, continue to pursue negotiations relating to a limited regional sewer system, which is what, what Jean said, only because we've probably taken three votes over the last eight years to continue discussions, including one made by this very board, I think, last spring, so that's all. I do think it, we need to really move on this and stop talking about it. And again, we may get to a point where it makes no sense.
Member Healy, last, final word?
I just want to make a motion.
Please.
All right, I would make a motion that we enter into this letter of intent, which is meant to be a legally non-binding contract on Cohasset and intended solely for the purpose of summarizing terms that we want to negotiate upon. So my motion is with that preface that we, oh, sorry Tracy, you, you took it down, that we, the undersigned officials of Cohasset, Situate, and Hull agree to continue to pursue negotiations relating to a limited regional sewer agreement between Cohasset, Hull, and Situate with the agreement, with any final agreement to be subject to the final approval of our respective towns. These negotiations will discuss, among other things, the following potential agreement elements, and then we adopt one through eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Member Kennedy, you on the second, we will do a vote by roll call, Member Creighton.
Well, I defer, I defer on the language to our English teacher. Well, well done Diane.
And lawyer.
And lawyer.
We're tag teaming.
What do I, all right, anyway, Jack Creighton.
Member Healy?
Jean Healy, double die.
Member Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Cory Evans, aye. Wonderful job, everybody. Next thing is annual town meeting warrant review and vote articles, this is the beginning of, is a preview of our votarama for April 5th, we're just trying to get three done tonight. Chris, if you have the floor.
Okay, so we are actually in the final, I had a, I had a multi-way conversation with Carolyn Murray today about various elements of the warrant, so it's all coming together well. She's polishing up a couple of articles, language on a couple of things. We got an advisory tomorrow night, you have a, a ability to hear the school committee budget presentation tomorrow night, and then you have a joint meeting on Thursday if you want to question the school committee on any elements of the budget. And then next Tuesday, as Cory said, the hope is to, to put the finishing touches. Tonight, there are three articles that Advisory has voted on and are not presented to you for consideration. The first is the transfer of land to the Affordable Housing Trust, that's the parcel on Heather Drive and Mill Lane. We actually have the final pieces, which are being polished up, we actually have the sections from the registry book now to actually put the exact location of the parcels in, and Advisory voted on that, if I believe Tracy, I don't have the warrant in front of me, seven, nothing in favor, so it's now in front of you folks for a vote to recommend.
Member Kennedy, you got a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I believe there was an abstention on, on that vote on advisory.
I was watching, I don't remember.
My, my understanding, it was, it was just relating to the, the discussion about selling the Heather Drive property as opposed to turning that.
Seven, oh, one, yes, it was.
Seven, zero, one.
Seven, zero, one, yeah.
Other questions from the board on Article 15, transfer of land to Affordable Housing Trust? Member Kennedy, please.
I'm willing to make a motion if there's no other questions.
Please go ahead.
Okay, I, I move that the Select Board recommends the article to transfer of land to the Affordable Housing Trust to town meeting.
Do I have a second? It looked like Member Creighton seconded. Jack, did you second? Okay, we'll take that as a yes.
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay, Member Creighton, second of the vote, roll call vote, Member Creighton.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Member Healy?
Jean Healy, double die.
Member Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Cory Evans, aye. Mr. Senior, Article 18.
Okay, much of the same, this was the expansion of the sewer district to include the Cook Estate. This was presented to all of you, of you folks last week, this is a public health emergency. Board of Public Health has directed this, the Sewer Commission has supported it, and the Advisor Commission voted in favor of this. If I have the vote down, right, eight to nothing.
Okay, if there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to recommend Article 18 expansion, better yet, recommend expansion of Sewer District to include Cook Estate article, just in case the numbers change, so.
So moved.
All right, thank you, do I have a second? All right, Member Dipold, Healy Dipold for the second, roll call vote, Member Creighton.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Member Healy?
Jean Healy, double die.
Member Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Cory Evans, aye. Remote participation for town meetings, Mr. Senior?
This, after a spirited conversation led by Select Members Evans and Dipold, Advisory voted seven to one to recommend this article as well.
If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend the article regarding remote participation for town meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, roll call vote, Member Creighton.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Member Healy?
Jean Healy, double die.
Member Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Cory Evans, aye, wonderful. It is a teaser of what's next, of next week, guys.
So, yeah, I, yeah, so, so I'll just continue with the, the, the warrant process is coming along smoothly, again, there's always a little bit of skips and jumps at the very end, so I think we're in good shape. One proposal that's been kicked around, so historically, the town has always proclaimedations during a meeting, and, and it was bounced off me by Vice Chair Evans about solid and others, to consolidate that into one article. Well, it turns out that is actually done out of the communities, they actually have a recognition of Article 1. So instead of having the proclamations that kind of pop up randomly during the meeting, there's a vote at the very beginning of the meeting, right? It's generally people, for, for, historically, it's been for people who've done long service for the town or stepping down after a long service as committee or board member, and town employees who are town residents typically, but who've done extended long services, as a matter of fact, there's been, there's five of those this last year, and there were several longtime board and committee members that have also stepped down for a variety of reasons. And so consolidating them into one article upfront is actually, makes a lot of sense. So I'll draft something up and bounce it off you folks, it's something that anyone has to vote on per se, and we can handle the details of who's in it before a town meeting to make sure we haven't missed anybody. There's always a moment of silence, I mean, that's always done, there's always a list of folks who've passed away, and that, that's usually included in the town report. So, but this would be a way to kind of formalize permanently and also put it in one spot, right, to begin the meeting, that kind of recognition for folks. Again, I'll pull something together based on what Carolyn Murray has provided, and give it to you folks for consideration.
Member Kennedy, questions?
I, I just wanted to ask or suggest that maybe if we have, I mean, we've all been approached recently with a couple of names, but there are some others that I would like to think, so maybe if we, could we send those names to you, Chris and Tracy, and then when you're making up the, the agenda or whatever, you can decide whether to include them?
The article would be, you know, very generic in, in its language, and then the actual motion at the, at the town meeting floor would have all the names that would actually happen, so, kind of like the town report, you accept the annual report, so you don't actually read the reports there, so, so, yeah, yeah, please, pass us along, I mean, because we, we try to scour lists and things as much as we can, but it, you know, it's, it's better to have a name three times than not at all, so please pass us along.
Thank you, all right, we will wrap up with Select Board comments, I'll begin with Mr. Creighton.
I think it's so nice to see this town moving forward, cleaning up the harbor, there's real progress going on, and it's just the beginning, people should understand, it's not going to happen right away, but a long journey starts with a single step, and I think the Select Board has, has really addressed this, and I look forward to doing that. And the other thing, I just want to say, it's good that we're finally at springtime and it's nice to live in this beautiful town, and it's very important that we all remember how special it is and work together cooperatively as co-citizens to make Cohasset, or keep Cohasset the beautiful town that it is.
Springtown outside of that blizzard we had the other day, Member Kennedy?
Yeah.
Thank you, just two things, I, I believe that stickers, RTF and beach stickers are available now, and if you haven't done it, you need to, is that right, Chris?
Yeah, available on mine too. Yeah, so, thank you for bringing that up, there are seniors 65 plus are going to get in-person days this Thursday and next Thursday, so it's the 31st and the 5th, 6th, 7th. It's in the, it's in the update from last week, otherwise, they're all being done either online or by dropping the materials in the box out front or by mail, and then turned around right away, but there's no in-person sales at Town Hall.
Member Dipold, Oh, Healy?
Just one quick question, Chris, I know that some people have asked my husband that the form online says 2021, is it okay to use the 2021 form for the facility sticker?
Yeah, yes, the fees haven't changed, I think that was just an oversight, so, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to check because I know there's been some questions about it, including.
The, the fee didn't change, so it's, it's still good.
Member Kennedy, were you done or do you have additional?
No, just two more quick things, one is, I, I believe I may not be able to make our Thursday night meeting, so I'm going to commit to watching the budget hearing tomorrow night at schools and, and then watch our meeting, joint meeting after it's been recorded, so just flagging that. And then lastly, this Sunday is the 45th Annual Cohasset Road Race, so hope to see everybody out there, whether, walk in the morning or the one o'clock run, it's really one of Cohasset's best, best events, so that's it.
Member Healy?
While I was going to echo Diane's comments about the road race, if you're like me on the fence contemplating whether you can actually run six miles, why not try? But, so, yeah, just a reminder that people should still sign up, and you can walk too if you wanted to. The other thing that I just wanted to bring up for consideration for future agenda issues is I know we continue to have parking constraints in the village, which is a good thing because we've got a lot of new restaurants opening up too, so we want to make sure that we have enough spaces for people to enjoy all the new restaurants coming in, like the Blue Or, and, and I think that's opening quite soon. So I do think that we might want to consider that sooner rather than later, I know we have a lot going on, but we, you know, I think that that's probably an important issue and likewise, the sort of continued traffic issues on Sawyer Street that, that we face. And just one last plug for the Registry of Deeds, for people to think about what we want to do on that front, again, coming up close to that meeting, so, anyway, those are just the things that are on my mind, including the things we might want to address within the next few weeks.
We did have a Norfolk County Commissioner who was running at the dump the other day, and I did not, you know, put him against the dumpster and grilled him, so my apologies to the board for not, not getting some questions answered. My, yield my time just for an update on the Thursday meeting, we have three things on the agenda for three updates, however, Advisory will be listening to CPC and Capitol Budgets Updates themselves tomorrow, I believe, Chris, so we will not be hearing those on Thursday. On Thursday, our meeting will just be reviewing, listening to the school committee presenting their budget, so just a quick edit of that agenda, we have all three things listed, but we will push us hearing off to the, to, again, the meeting of the 5th, which is getting longer by the second. So I don't have any other topics, and I can't make a motion because I'm the chair, so I will hear a motion for a German.
So moved.
All right.
I yielded my traditional.
I have another Zoom at 8:15.
Second, Mr. Creighton, please.
Oh, I, I seconded.
You have to vote now.
Oh, I have to vote?
Yes, you do.
Jack Creighton, aye. Jack Creighton, I.
Member Healy.
Jean Healy, double die.
Member Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Corey Evans, I. Have a good evening, everybody, thanks for your time.
Thank you, everyone.